Okay, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have our invocation from Dr. Art Folks, Executive Director and Associate, Associate, Associational Mission Strategist of the Southside Baptist Network in McDonough. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor here.
Mr. Chair? I would like, Mr. Chair, wait. This is actually the pastor that is over the congregation of Bethel Baptist Church. So I thought it was important that we realize that considering the blessing that happened where all the lives were saved. But we do pray that the church builds expediently, bigger and better. So thank you for coming here.
It's my honor. Let us pray together. Lord, we love you. We are grateful for your goodness to us. And God on this night, as these people who have surrendered their lives to serving a community, I pray you would give them wisdom. I pray you would give them peace. And I pray, as the Psalmist wrote, that you would make your path straight before them and that they would have the courage and the faith to follow. And for all of us, I pray we would live the rest of this day to honor, honor you. In the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our August 15th, 2023 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
Yes, mister. Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes. Board, I would like to have item eight, which is Central Services requesting of approval from the Board of Commissioners for disposition of county surplus items, 23-333, to be placed on the regular agenda. Also, item 31, which is item 2023-184, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to return unobligated emergency rental assistance. There's some questions about that one real quick. And there was one more. I have a question on seven, but it could stay there on the consent agenda. And there's one about the extension of Southern Regional Hospital for the use of ARPA funds. I had it noted, but I don't see it here. Do you, Mr. Chair and Madam Clerk? Oh, this is the revised one. Great, thank you. 2023-183 to be taken separately.
Any others?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Ah, yes. If we would pull number 16 for the regular agenda, which is reclassification, number 18, which is also reclassification, and number 19, which is the pilot agreement, which is Resolution 23-172.
Thank you, Commissioner. I wanted that one as well.
Any others?
Yes, Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Davis?
Number 20, 2023-173, to the regular agenda.
Any others? All right. I would like to add an emergency add-on at the request of the Police Department, who is applying for an Edward Byrne Grant for traffic response vehicle in amount of $142,460. The urgency of adding this on is because the expiration date will have expired prior to us meeting again for them to be able to submit this application. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Also, I'd like to pull from the agenda the proclamation.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second to remove that from the agenda?
Second.
Is there any questions?
Just to, that it's moved to September 5th, Mr. Chair, as the judge is in the middle of jury trial.
Clear on that, Madam Clerk? All right, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Any others? All right, here and now, aye, as for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Franklin. Any questions? Any other items? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Our next item is the approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Are there any questions?
Yes, just one quick one.
All right, Commissioner Franklin.
Number seven, I noticed that it's for the access for the fire department, but I had put in a request as it was sent over for, again, the Boys and Girls Club, which serves all of Clayton County for right now until we get another one, as I hear and proud to say may be coming up in District One. So are we moving forward with that one as well? Did that need to be included under that? I think it would be not so much fire, but also someone from operations since it was sent over to operations, too.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The recommendation for number seven, as it pertains to the fire department, is simply for our 13 fire stations.
Correct.
To move them from an older access control platform to a new one.
To a what now?
To a newer platform, which is also being countywide moved as well.
So thank you for that. So I wanted to ask, can we piggyback on that even though it's a different funding source to go ahead and comply with the building to keep the children safe?
The Boys and Girls Club, ma'am, is moving forward. That scope of work was sent to Central.
Okay.
So they're working through. So it's two separate issues. They're both still moving forward. Neither have been stalled.
Awesome. And we won't have to go back and change it over.
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
That was it, Mr. Chair.
All right, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed. It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number eight, Request to Sell County Surplus Vehicles, 23-333. This is presented by our Central Services Director, Carol Rogers.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. The request is on behalf of Central Services. This is pursuant to Section 2-156 of the County's Procurement Code. Our request is to approve, for you to approve, the disposition of the county surplus items. They're listed in your Attachment A. The request is for you to approve and authorize the chairman is designated to execute any necessary documents to accomplish the disposal of the vehicles. So there's a total of 15 vehicles that's listed on Exhibit A.
Awesome.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Franklin. Any questions?
I just want to know, will we know how much we get for those vehicles moving forward?
Yes. What happens is that we do use a service called GovDeals, and we make that, you know, available to everyone, citizens, or anyone that wants to do that. And we send the proceeds over to finance, but we certainly can bring that back if you all would like to report that to the board.
That would be great.
Okay.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number 16, Solicitor General Reclassifications Prosecutors. This is presented by our Human Resources Director, Pam Amles.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair Franklin, Commissioners, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. LR 7858, on behalf of the Office of the Solicitor General, Human Resources is requesting to reset the entry compensation for prosecutors within the Office of the Solicitor General. If the request is approved, per Civil Service Rule 5.201, as amended January 6, 1990, incumbents' compensation will be reset. I do want to put on record for the board that the first one that we're deleting is Assistant Solicitor General. We want to delete four Assistant Solicitor General, Grade 27, Step 7. It should be Step 7 instead of Step 4. Total cost is what you have, 383, 169. We're also deleting three Assistant Solicitor General, Grade 27, Step 12. Total cost, 304, 299. Two Senior Assistant Solicitor General, two, Grade 31, Step 3. Total cost, 219, 886. One Deputy Chief Solicitor General, Grade 32, Step 12. Total cost, 127, 851. One Chief Assistant Solicitor General, Grade 34, Step 3. Total cost, 126, 368. We are requesting to add five Assistant Solicitor General, Grade 27, Step 17. Total cost, 537, 178. Four Senior Assistant Solicitor General, two, Grade 31, Step 15. Total cost, 505, 474. One Deputy Chief Solicitor General, Grade 33, Step 15. Total cost, 138, 761. And lastly, one Chief Assistant Solicitor General, Grade 34, Step 12. Total cost, 140, 398. The request moves the entry compensation for these classifications toward the middle of the pay scale, which represents the market rate for the classification. The annual budgetary impact is $106,238.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Ms. Amles, are any of these positions vacant?
We have about two, I believe, Commissioner, that's vacant. And let me get Ms. Finn, Ms. Kedra Finn, up here. The solicitor is at a conference, but I do have Ms. Kedra Finn up here.
Ms. Finn? Yes.
Did she say 160? Did she say 160 or 160?
160.
Uh-huh. Yes, ma'am.
I thought she said 106.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chair, Commissioners. Greetings on behalf of Solicitor General Brooks, who is at a conference, but he is watching. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, no, I was asking, Ms. Amles, are any of these positions vacant?
Do you have? Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I believe we have about two that's vacant. But once we reset the classification, if the board approves it, once we reset the classifications, then they will come in at the salary that the Board of Commissioners have approved.
You have anything, since you're up here, that you would like to add?
Just here to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, and this is in keeping with this solicitor's request to get qualified as well as, well, a candidate pool, which has been hard to recruit for.
Yes. And since we have been able to advertise at the range, we actually have two interviews coming up this week, hoping, you know, to be able to have a comparable salary to offer if, in fact, the interviews go well.
Thank you. Commissioner Hamburg.
Yes. Maybe this is for the attorney. Okay. It's my understanding that civil service, that entry level, you come in at Step 1, and...
Yes, under Civil Service Rule 5.0. Good evening, first of all, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Board. Yes, Madam Commissioner, Civil Service Rule 5.201 does say, under normal circumstances, that the employees are to come in at the entry level of the grade when they're first hired.
Okay. But if we have vacant positions, that's not a hire. So how can we do that? If civil service is saying one thing, and we're... Sounds like we are going to be violating the Civil Service Rule if it's a vacant position. I think positions have to be filled, and it has to come through the board for us to decide whether or not it's a Step 1 or some other step.
Ms. Amles.
Commissioner, not all of our positions start at Step 1. We had a MAG study that was completed back in 2018. And instead of regrading the positions, what we did is we increased the steps in order to get the position at the targeted amount that MAG had recommended as being the starting salary. Now, I will say to the board that I graciously appreciate you all approving of the workforce planning study. We are working on the scope of work. We will be submitting that to Director Rogers. And once we go through the RLP process to bring someone in to complete that study, they're going to take a look at our total compensation system, and we will be making recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. But Civil Service Rule 5.201 gives the Board of Commissioners the authority to set the salaries. It has to come before you all for approval.
For a person, not for a vacant position. It comes before us for a person, if a director or whoever has a person they want to bring in. A new person comes in at grade whatever, Step 1. There have been exceptions, but those directors have come to us. I think it has, I'm almost positive, Civil Service Rule, it has to be board-approved. But we can't be approving something for a vacant.
And let me ask you, when you say board-approved, are you saying Civil Service board-approved? Or are you saying the Board of Commissioners approved? Yes, ma'am.
Start somebody off at a higher rate.
Right. In order to do that, it has to have the Board of Commissioners approval.
Commissioner Franklin.
I'm actually going to ask that we maybe perhaps hold this to after executive session. Let me tell you why. It is my understanding that when the solicitor came before us and in terms of conversations, he's gone through the process to exempt his employees from civil service. So I do want to make sure that we don't overlook that because he stated that before the board several times and provided said information stating that through the Solicitor General's office that they were exempted. So I just, with him not being here, is there any way, Mr. Reed, that we can clarify that? That you can look under, through the codes, the state code?
There you are.
It's on record. I'm looking at it right here on record, and I just think we need to confirm that.
Ms. Finn?
Commissioner, I'll yield to Chuck in just a moment. But I have spoken with the solicitor. I've spoken with the former solicitor, too, Keith Martin, who was also under the assumption that the employees of the Office of the Solicitor isn't covered by civil service. So I've talked to both of them about that, and we're all on the same page that they indeed are, as well as the employees of the DA's office. So the employees of the DA's office, there are specific exemptions for civil service, protected employees. But it is clear that they are. Yes, ma'am, they are.
There's just some confusion with that in terms of communication.
Well, then, if that's the case, they are under civil service. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am. They definitely are under civil service. I've had this conversation with Keith Martin, the former solicitor, as well as Solicitor Brooks.
But we're looking at this year, though.
Right, and that...
Commissioner Hamburg.
Okay.
The solicitor is not a director. He's an elected official, and so the prosecutors are not civil service protected.
Correct.
The staff, myself and the other staff, we are under civil service, but the prosecutors and the investigators are not.
I thought, yes.
Okay. Back to these positions. According to civil service, a vacant position, we can't do that with a vacant position. It has to be a position that comes to us, whether it be an elected official, director, or whatever. It has to come to us to have an exception to the Grade Step 1 provision.
Well, I'll give you an example of that, Commissioner, and that's when we go through the budget process. We have a net 21 brand-new positions that have been approved for BY23. And the budgets were presented, the directors and elected officials, they identified their needs, they presented their budget request. And we have 21 brand-new positions that have, the salary has, the salaries have already been set for those particular positions because the Board of Commissioners, you all have the authority to set the salaries. The Executive Secretary to the Civil Service Board, which is me as the HR Director, I have the responsibility, not authority, because I don't like, I don't want any authority, but I have the responsibility to bring requests on behalf of the Civil Service Board to you, to you all, for your consideration and approval. And that is found in Rule 8 of the Civil Service Rule. Now, I'm going to go back. I heard Ms. Finn say that the prosecutors are not approved, are not under the Civil Service Board. As the HR Director, I'm going to disagree with that. But I'd like to always go back and double-check myself to make sure of that because I had talked to, like I said, I talked to the solicitor about this, and I also talked to the former solicitor, who came to me with that request.
Let me ask the attorney, as far as civil service, but can we do this? Can we approve vacant positions, with an S, without BOC, Board of Commissioners, approval?
So let me clarify a couple of things. First, the solicitor received authority from the General Assembly to exclude people, investigators and prosecutors, that are hired after the entry of that change in the law. So that went into effect, I believe, this past year. So anyone who was hired after that change is, and those two positions are not civil service protected. However, the board sets the salary for every person who is a county employee. So while they may not be civil service protected, you all do set what that budgetary amount would be. So they may not have a grade and step, or, you know, they may not be, okay, well, we're going to put you as a 27-12, for instance. But if you've budgeted that amount for that, that's what, because the state law says that the employees of the solicitor are his employees, and you're paid, subject to approval of the Board of Commissioners. So even though they may not be civil service, the new hires may not be civil service protected. Those budgetary positions are required to be approved by you all.
Correct.
Well, okay, so, I mean, I can see us voting on the positions that are already filled. My concern is those vacant positions.
Right. So the vacant positions, if they are, you could, you could set a budgetary amount for those positions, while they would not necessarily be civil...
I'm talking about now, considering now, what's going on now.
Part of the records.
Right.
Right. So if, if there was a, if you all decided that we're going to allocate a certain amount of money, whether you classify that as a person coming in at 33-12 or whatever, I don't know which positions are vacant, so it's kind of hard to give. But let's just, I'm just going to use two examples. Let's say that you have two Assistant Solicitor General position at a Grade 27, Step 7, and you're moving those positions to Grade 27, Step 17. Those positions are not civil service, they are not under our civil service protection, I mean, under civil service system.
Correct.
However, you all can set the salary for a Grade 27, Step 17, for a person to come in and work at that salary. Does that make sense?
It does.
Well, let me ask you this question.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Go ahead. Right. Well, is it okay, or can we, as far as the positions that are filled, go ahead and do that? But the vacant ones, leave them because of the same thing, about having to come to us for our approval? And how can it come to us when there's nobody in that position?
So you can, you can do it either way. You could do it either way in the sense, if you say, we already have a budget that's already set for that position at Grade 27, Step 7, and I'm just using the, I'm just using the Assistant Solicitor General. If you say, I already have a, I already have a budgetary amount set for that at 27-7, when he hires these individuals, he will have to come back to you to say...
See, that's what I'm trying to avoid.
But you can, you can do it with the new positions different than you... Like, if these people were under civil service protection and they were part of the civil service system, I would agree that they would need to be hired first, then come.
But they're not.
But because they aren't, you would be basically saying, I'm setting a salary for these people, a budgetary amount for that that is consistent with Grade 27, Step 17, and then giving him the authority to fill those positions at that salary level. Even though you're not saying, hey, I'm hiring you as 27-17, you're budgeting that amount for him to be able to hire somebody, if that is the will of the board.
Okay. Now, what if three months down the road, and he, you know, is wanting to hire someone at, what, another one of those positions? Will he or will he not have to come to us to get the approval?
Yes.
See, I'm hoping we can avoid that every time he gets ready to hire somebody.
May I interject a second? I've been waiting for a minute. Yes, because, okay, so I'm the one that started this about he's not... And I'm glad, thank you for the clarification. So number one, let's start with this, and this may help us all understand. Assistant Solicitor General, is that not a prosecutor? Is it or is it not a prosecutor?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay. So according to Mr. Reed, the prosecutors are not subjected to the Civil Service Rule set, correct?
At the time of that order, yes, that's correct.
And you just said, moving forward, anyone that's hired, correct?
Correct.
So then, if that's the case, what's the hang-up is we're stuck on what's the Civil Service Rule, when in actuality, these prosecutors have been exempted. So what the solicitor is asking us, based upon my assertion, is let's go ahead and get the amounts approved so I can hire folks, and so I don't have to release people and, at the end of the day, because I don't have enough prosecutors, and I have to release somebody in 90 days, and a young girl's life is in danger. Is that not the case?
Right. It's, we're asking for a reclass of the position, regardless if it's filled or someone's in it now. That way, we won't have to come back to the board.
So he won't come back for these positions because we've already approved the positions, which cuts down the hiring process, which is the issue with the prosecutors being in the courtroom so that they can move the cases along. Is that the case?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
A reclass takes care of vacancies and field positions. It takes care of the position, not the person. And we won't have to keep coming out and...
Correct.
We're setting the funding board.
And it's only, and it's only for the five positions, the four senior assistants, the one deputy, and the one Assistant Solicitor General.
That is correct.
Okay, but after that, if other positions come, will we have to come before?
No, we won't need to come back because the reclassification sets the foundation.
Not for those positions. Not for the positions we're talking about now. I'm talking about any other position.
But this is all they're asking for now, Commissioner.
That's all they have.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all they're asking right now.
Right now?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, right now.
But that's all he's telling.
What I would like to avoid is him coming to us every time.
Which is correct. But if we reclass the position and not the person, we won't have to come in for every person.
Correct. It makes sense.
Because it's already set.
Correct.
Have we been doing this, Ms. Amles, as far as hiring people and not at the, uh, step one position?
Not with that Board approval, Commissioner. As you all know, in executive session, I brought several requests back that a department head may want to hire Billy Bob at a grade ten instead of a step one. That is brought to the Board of Commissioners, and that is specific for Billy Bob.
And that's every time?
E- every single time, yes, ma'am. We're not gonna prosecute, no, yes, ma'am. But what we're asking for, uh, this request is not for Billy Bob, but for the classification itself. Which is much better. That's, that's what we're asking, not for an individual.
Commissioner Davis, you have something?
Yes, um, as far as the, the MAGG recommendations?
Yes, sir.
How does that correlate to these numbers that they're presenting?
Well, the MAG, the MAGG study, Commissioner, was done back in two thousand nineteen, and the purpose was to, um, look at our positions, look at our labor market, and to bring whatever positions were below the labor market at that time, it was to bring them up to the labor market. I think about four hundred and eighty-eight classifications may have been impacted. Don't hold me to that number, but I'm thinking that it was about four eighty-eight. What we did with the MAGG study is we upgra, we, we increased the steps to get that targeted compensation that MAGG had recommended. So, MAGG said, Billy Bob, in this particular position, you, he needs to be at this particular amount. We increased the steps to get to that particular amount. What we did not do, which was lesson learned, is that we did not regrade those positions, which is why we see a lot of different things happening in the compensation system now. And that, when we do the workforce study that will be coming up soon, we're gonna look at every single thing, basically tearing the system down and rebuilding it.
Exactly, okay, great, and also too, um, there's a discrepancy here. Attorney Reed is saying, what, protected, or you're saying protected, I think Attorney Reed, you're saying not protected, or, someone said not protected.
We need to go with the attorney. No offense. Hoping no law. It, it definitely does, and the clarity, because if that was a particular order, HR was not notified of that particular order. There, within this, and, and within the Civil Service Act, it is specific about the different classifications, and I wished I had brought that with me today. It is specific about the classifications that are not protected under the Civil Service, uh, under that particular act. So, if there has been a change to that act, that got passed Human Resources, and I don't believe in pointing fingers or, or, or anything like that. But the Act is specific as to who is protected under Civil Service and who's not. Mr. Chair.
For me, right now, my thought is, until that issue is addressed and solidified on all fronts, I think we should begin to hold this until that.
That was my original recommendation. Uh, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Franklin.
So, you all know what I asked? I've been told over and over again to lean to the subject matter experts, no disrespect to you, but we have two people with, in, in law. I think he can look it up very quickly, which is why I originally asked to hold it, so we didn't have to go through this here, and he could have, it just easily let us know, yes, it's confirmed, and we move forward. Ms. Ambles, if you would allow Mr. Reed to confirm, as he's already explained, we don't want confusion to the Board. It has to come from Mr. Reed and from the Office, because they're the ones with the precedent. So, if they could clarify, or we hold it until later, whichever one the Board wants to do is what we need to do. And, and Commissioner Franklin, with all, with all due respect, I said earlier that I'm the type of person who likes always, anybody who worked with you will tell me, will tell you, I always double-check myself, because there may be things that I have overlooked. And I think I just said, I just said that, and as much as Chuck and Kedra know the law, I know Civil Service too. I'm clear, and that's, don't take it that way, Ms. Ambles. All I'm asking is, let's hold it, and so we can be certain.
Whatever, please, is the bold word.
Thank you. Uh, who ma, can we amend the motion?
Ho, hold on a second, Ms. Finn, you have something to add?
No, I, this was, the date of the order is April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
April what?
Eighteenth, twenty-
Twenty twenty-two.
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I remember it.
Were you finished, Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Okay, so, who made, who made the motion, original motion?
You did, and I seconded it.
Oh, I did?
Dr. Anderson seconded it.
After our, after our dialogue, I forgot. Okay, all right.
Do you want to do?
Okay, so, I'm gonna amend my motion to hold this until after executive session, and please, let's get Mr. Brooks a number that he can call in, no, that he can call into executive session, so he can fill us, answer, any, answer any questions.
He can talk to Chuck directly.
Yes, yes. All right, is there a second?
Second.
I'm just trying to help.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Our next item is item number eight.
I'm, I'm next, Courtney, I'm again.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. On behalf of the Sheriff's Office, Human Resources is requesting to classify, to reclassify, eight Sheriff Deputy Two to Sheriff Deputy One. Human Resources is requesting the Board's consideration of approval of the request. The purpose of this request is to create a career path within the office of the Sheriff. This request, if approved, will create a career path for officers, clerks, and security specialists to become a certified State of Georgia Deputy Sheriff Two. This request results in a savings of twenty-six thousand eighty-three dollars. And I think Sheriff Allen is here.
All right, is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Sheriff Allen.
Mr. Chairman, Vice, Vice Chair and Board of Commissioners, uh, good evening.
So, explain to us, because this is different from the first presentation at our last meeting. Could you explain what the difference is?
Yes, uh, Chairman, so, what I wanna do is create a Deputy One position, which is, uh, would be equivalent to a fire recruit or a police recruit. Some ti, some, at some point before my time, there was, this pos, position was already at the Sheriff's Office, but it was deleted. With that, it prevents me from sending, if I sent a deputy or clerk to the academy, they would have to hold the current position that they're in, when really, they should be in a recruit status, uh, position, which the Deputy One would be a deputy recruit. So, I would like to take, uh, eight of the, I believe I have twenty-four, twenty-five vacant positions now, and just reclass them from Deputy Ones, and then so, we can just, uh, put people into the academy and have them in that position. So, they'll only be in that position for anywhere from, the lowest academy is twelve weeks, the highest, I believe, is thirty-two. So, anywhere from twelve to thirty-two weeks, they'll be in that position, before they move into the Deputy Two position.
So, this position, the, not only the internal people, but anybody else that's not already a sworn, sworn certified officer, can be hired into a Deputy One position?
Correct, correct, so, traditionally at the Sheriff's Office, if you wanted to come and be a deputy, you would have to be in, in the jail, or come in at the jail. This makes it where I can hire someone, uh, just as any department or agency does, uh, in law enforcement, straight off the street, and then just send them to the academy to be trained.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, is this what post requires, or is this something that Clayton County Sheriff Office is doing?
So,
Are we meeting whatever standards that's required by state?
So, far as a post requirement, it's, it's, it's no post requirement for the, for the position. I can send, I could have a, uh, Sheriff Service Clerk go to the Clayton County Police Academy and get certified. Just as, just once they're certified, then the, their position changes, because now they are a certified deputy. So, I think what the confusion was last time was, uh, currently, our Deputy Two position that we have now, there's a, uh, requirement in there that says that you must be, um, post-certified already. So, because that requirement is there, um, I can't just put anyone who may be coming from Family Dollar into that position, because they're not already certified. So, what fixes that is if we go to this position that should have already been there before, but it was taken away, by the previous administration, they can now go into that slot, and it, and it fixes their problem. But also, we're using, we're not, we're not, we're not adding positions, we're just reclassifying it. So, really, with taking these positions from the Deputy Twos to making them Deputy Ones, it's actually a savings to the county, and the money comes back to you all.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're following whatever it is that the state has established.
Yes, Commissioner, it, it, it's, it's no, it's no, uh, state requirement. Like I said, I could, I could send them in a different position.
Yeah, for that Deputy One position, there is no post requirement. The requirement comes in after you go, you have to go to the academy, you have to get certified, and then you're able to have arrest powers and so forth, so, to this point. Uh, any other questions?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Davis?
Is this making it easier to become, uh, sh, to be, to get, be a Sheriff One or Sheriff Two?
It, it does make it, it does make the process easier, um, for, and I, and I, and just give you an example. If, if I'm at Walmart, and someone says, hey, hey, Sheriff, I've always wanted to be a police officer, uh, are you hiring? I'll say, yeah, I'm hiring, but I just don't have that position to hire you straight off the street. So, uh, can you come in and work in the jail for six months, and then maybe I can send you? And, and then they're like, well, I really wanna be a police officer, not a correction officer. And then that kinda is what the, the, the issue is. So, it makes it easier, I can say, yes, I wanna hire you, um, and, like I said, have the same authority that the fire chief or the, uh, police chief has to hire somebody straight off the street.
I, I guess my, one of my issues with it is that this is public safety, and with public safety, I wanna see the requirements tighter rather than looser, um, to begin to protect our citizens more. That's, that's one of them. That, that's the major one with me. I don't want these requirements loose. Because as you used the, the Family Dollars example, so in essence, I can bring somebody from a Family Dollar and say, you know what? Since I have you in as a, as a clerk or whatever, I can now send you in to be a Sheriff One.
So, so Chairman, I just wanna, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I wanna just make sure that, that we're clear. We already do this in every single, um, law enforcement capacity that we have in Clayton County. Every, all the municipalities, the cities, all, the fire chief and the Clayton County Police Chief have this authority. I just don't have the authority, because I just don't have the position. And someone, you gotta start from somewhere. You know, be, be, before I got in law enforcement, I was frying chicken at, at J.R. Crickets. I've had thirty-two jobs before, before I can, actually became the sheriff. So, um, you have to start somewhere, uh, and again, this is the lowest level of, um, it's just the entry-level position. So, any entry-level position at, at any, uh, place or corporation will have a bare minimum. And that bare minimum would, would just be, uh, a high school diploma, a GED, and a driver's license.
Understand. But your bare minimum can cause an unsafe condition with these folks.
That's an unfair statement.
A bare minimum at the chicken place is not-
Let, let me interject for a second. Go ahead, go ahead.
So, my thing is, I wanna make sure that our citizens are protected here in a very, very controlled and concise, in essence, are, do they have, are they in a position to be post-certified?
Yes, yes, they, they, they go to the Clayton County Academy, which is, which is overseen by, uh, Chief Kevin Roberts, that he has a standard that they must pass. So, it's not like they're gonna be in the position and always have that, have that, uh, that bare minimum of training. What happened is they'll be hired as a, as a, as a recruit, Deputy One, they'll go to the, they'll go to the training, and then once they complete the training, they'll be post-certified.
No, hold on a second, Chief.
Save the day, Chief.
Let me add my two cents in.
Here I come to save the day.
Everybody biting at the bits, hold on a second. This, this is what my argument was last time they presented this, and to your fairness, you not law enforcement, not, having been there. It's not, it's not that they are creating a less safe environment for our citizens, because they're in administrative capacity, just like the, the police recruits. They don't have weapons, they're not out on the streets. They are working and getting, uh, uh, a lot of times, getting a, a, another, or a look at what being a Deputy Sheriff is about. And at that time, I much prefer them to look at it and, and talk to the other officers or deputies, and say, hey, this isn't for me, as opposed to sending them through an academy, putting them on the street, and they say, hey, I gotta quit, and they, fifty thousand dollars in the hole at our, 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 uh, expense. So, I, I understand what you're saying, and it definitely makes sense, uh, Chief, go ahead.
You're already answered now, you gotta let me-
Sheriff, can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Let's say they go with that, and they say, you know, this is not for me.
It's everywhere.
Is their payroll back? Do they get their position back, and is their payroll back to what it was?
There, there is no position.
There is no position, okay.
They, they, they are hired as a recruit.
Okay.
Uh, they're deputy recruit, they'll go to the academy. If they fail out of the academy, they, they don't have a job.
And, and for the record, didn't you go through the academy? I think I was at your graduation, sir.
I did go to the academy, I went, I went through eighteen long weeks of it.
And that's after DeKalb County and working as a deputy, correct? You had to come back and work and go through our academy?
Yes, so, so what I did, and just, just so you, you understand the difference, um, when I went through the academy, I was, I went through the academy as a correction officer, which was a lower pay than my counterparts that were going as a police recruit, because police recruits are paid more than a correction officer. So, for the eighteen long weeks, I was getting a little bit of money. They were getting way more money than I was. So, this brings it even, this brings it even where, uh, a Deputy One recruit and a police recruit will make the same amount, once they're going through the academy together.
You got anything you wanna add?
No, well, I just wanna echo your comments, Chairman, and to provide clarity for Commissioner Davis. I think you're getting caught up in the verbiage Deputy Sheriff versus, the sheriff used Deputy Recruit just then, and that would help everybody put things in perspective, in that these are not candidates that would immediately go onto the streets, as the Chairman indicated. They'd be much like our police recruits. We don't allow police recruits to carry weapons, to wear uniforms, to drive police vehicles. They are there for the training and the class portion only, and at the end of that academy period, then, they can do all those things in force of the state laws and the county ordinances of Clayton County, if that helps.
And it goes through your academy, correct?
Well, he can send them wherever he wants to, as long as it's a post-approved academy in the state.
Perfect.
Chief and Sheriff, thank you for the comment. Any other questions?
I just think he need to, thank you for the clarity, but you need to fix that, Mr. Commissioner. You need to fix that, talking about unsafe.
All right, we, we are moving on. Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
It fixes the parity issue too, Mr. Chairman, so thank you.
Yes, it does.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Ambles.
Our next item is item number nineteen, Resolution twenty-two-three-one-seventy-two, presented by our Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Uh, good evening. Resolution twenty-two-three-one-seventy-two is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into an amended and restated pilot agreement with HACC, AH, NPI Incorporated. And how, and Clayton County Public Schools relating to the development of flats at Mount Zion and villas at Mount Zion, to authorize the chairman lawyers designate to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to carry out the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required by the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Uh, yes, I think I've finished. Right, um, I know we did this before, so, I would like to know the difference between the first pilot agreement and this one. And while you're giving us that information, you may wanna tell us what the acronym is, what the acronym means for pilot?
Yes, so, payment in lieu of taxes is a pilot. Uh, so, initially, uh, the Board approved, um, a pilot agreement with, uh, Housing Authority, um, HACC, an entity, HACC, AH, NPI Incorporated, and the public school system for the, um, properties, the villas and flats at Mount Zion. Uh, very, very fifty-thousand-foot level explanation of how that was going to work is that, um, the taxes that would be due for those, uh, entities would be based on the development costs, or the development profits that they had. Because this type of, this type of, um, deal, uh, is a little different than your typical pilot-type, uh, agreements. State law says that when you're having a agreement of this particular type, they can only pay what they would be able to pay, uh, if they were just a normal, um, de, uh, development. So, just using round numbers, if, uh, they were assessed, uh, in- So just using round numbers, if uh they were assessed and uh and they had to pay ten thousand dollars in taxes. Under the prior agreement, whether they made ten thousand, fifteen thousand, a hundred thousand, that's what they would have paid in property taxes. Under the revised agreement, which is consistent with the law now, that if they made twelve thousand dollars or they would owe twelve thousand dollars under the old agreement, but their assessed value would be ten thousand for purposes of taxes, they would pay the ten, the remaining two would be put in escrow. And so any year that they, their profits fell underneath whatever the assessed value would be, that escrow amount would come to pay the difference. So they'll never pay more than what the amount is that they would be due normally. And then the way that that works is that the housing authority, once those monies are received, they will issue a check uh split three ways evenly between the uh public schools and the county. They retain the other third so that uh that the tax distribution would be equal among all parties to this agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Next item is item twenty, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one seventy-three.
Uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three one seventy-three is an ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County as amended specifically to amend part one related laws pertaining to Clayton County, chapter one general provisions, chapter six alcoholic beverages and chapter twenty-two businesses. To amend the fine limits for failure to pay occupational taxes, to allow authorize the ability to seek injunctive relief, to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules and regulations to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Davis, Attorney Reed. So basically, if a business is operating without a business license, what is the process? This would can basically cease them from doing business and what is that process?
So, uh, currently bef- before this ordinance is in place, if a business, um, if a entity does business without a business license, the only remedy the county has is to go and cite them for operating a business without a business license. Um, and that does not stop that person. They will just, they can continue to operate the business without a business license. It puts a burden on our code enforcement officers because a lot of times they don't find out that the person's running a business until someone in the community says, hey, I think somebody's running a business here or um or however they find out about it. So the the code at um limits uh the fine amount for operating without a business license currently at five hundred dollars. Every other violation of our county code go has the authority to go up to what the statutory maximum, which is one thousand. So the fir- one thing that this proposed ordinance will do is take that artificial limit off and allow the courts, if necessary, and based on what the findings that are before them, to issue a fine up to a thousand dollars if appropriate. The second thing that this does is it plates places two provisions within the alcohol license provisions and our business license provisions, which gives uh our office the ability to go to um court and seek an injunction, basically saying, court, we're asking you to use your court authority to say to this business owner, because of the things that you have done, the areas that you have shown that you are willing to flout the county's laws, we're asking you to use your court power to stop them from doing business. What that does is it um then gives the court the ability to say, this is what I'm ordering you to do. And if we go and find out that they are flouting the court's order, it's the court who can then determine what would be appropriate remedy. Um, so that's kind of a nutshell of what this ordinance uh provides.
Thank you. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Our next item is item number thirty, resolution twenty twenty-three dash one eighty-three.
So, um, resolution twenty twenty-three one eighty-three, there's actually a substituted uh resolution that's provided to the board. It's a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into articles of agreement with the Southern Regional Medical Center to authorize the chairman to execute the amended agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary, to reflect the appropriate revenue source and expense all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
My second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
Have a couple of questions. What is the total amount that we're asking to have extended, first of all?
Uh, so there's two parts to this. Uh, what is currently on the agenda was initially an extension, uh simply to extend the time. Um, there was one million, um, and I'm actually, I'm going to have Chief Murkison talk, say exactly what that dollar amount was, but, oh, I'm sorry, one million seventeen thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents initially that we're asking the board to allow uh Southern Regional to extend because the original agreement expire well, was to expire in twenty twenty-two, but ARPA allows those funds to extend through twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
So basically, we're going to track what ARPA already allows to allow them to spend the money. However, after speaking with them, it appears that there was a disbursement that was done for one point seven that we are now asking the court to, court, asking the board to um to uh approve and then at the same time also allow uh that extension. So the amount that's still remaining in the one million figure that I gave, one million seventeen thousand change, that's still the right amount. But we're now, we're going back and saying, um, the seven, one point seven six six two fifty that was um provided in January of twenty twenty-three, capturing that uh and authorizing basically the extension from twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. And this amended articles of agreement will capture all of that.
Let me tell you why I'm asking. I think that what we need to do is read all of this because if you look at the indemnification clause, and I'll be quite honest with you, myself as well as eight other individuals within the community met with the hospital well over a month ago, and there weren't many answers given to the original seven, the seven million that we gave. So I want to first make sure that I have a total amount because as we're talking about the solicitors and the money that they need, um, I want to make sure we understand that that's the seven million plus the one point seven, no matter where the funding source comes from. And then one point one, so we have seven, one point seven and one point one. But they're asking for an extension when they didn't spend it from twenty twenty-two, but we gave them another seven million. I'm a little lost in that. And and I want you to understand, I go deep into this and in the meeting we had, one of the doctors that was stated that would be there, you all didn't know, he's a personal friend of mine, and he has pulled out of that hospital because it has become unsafe. Nobody wants to deal with what's really going on, but we have to look at how we're spending our money because we're accountable to the people. And we're accountable to the people of this county. And I just had a meeting with some of the people in the audience and I was addressed with the questions of how are we making sure that we're using the taxpayer dollar in a way that's going to benefit the county the most? But yet and still, we got young ladies losing their lives because they ain't got enough prosecutors. And according to this indemni- indemnification clause, it says to the extent authorized by law, the service provider should indemnify, defend and save otherwise whole harmless Clayton County government. It's elected and appointed officials, departments, agencies, boards and authorities. And then it also goes further to say that the provider shall be responsible for primary loss, investigation, defense and judgment costs where this indemnification is applicable. Service providers shall agree to waive all rights of subrogation and or financial recovery of any kind in favor of Clayton County. So again, if we already gave them one point seven through ARPA funding and they spent that amount, we gave them another seven million, but they haven't, they're asking for an extension for the original amount through ARPA. I'm confused.
Um, so that provision, that indemnification provision, that is if there is a lawsuit against the county by which they are alleging that it's um Southern Regional's actions that they're blaming on the county. So there's they're say they're suing both of us and and it's because of something that Southern Regional did that they're claiming that the county is responsible for. What we're saying is that provision says they are responsible for making sure that the county is not left um ho- holding the bag for something that they did. So, um, that's standard language that the county puts in its contracts because we want to where whenever there's uh the potential for someone to sue based on a contract, we want to make sure that that person that we enter into a contract with is aware that they have to make sure that the county's not harmed by entering into an agreement with you. So that wouldn't cause the county necessarily to necessarily be their insurer or to to um defend them or anything. It's just that if something was sued, if we were sued because of their actions, they would have to defend us.
So I'm glad you said that. This is the next part that is critical. And the reason I say this, board, and I want to make sure it is not misconstrued. As a mother of four, I'm all about quality healthcare. But this says that this proposed money was supposed to be used for the offsetting costs and expenses associated with hiring, retention and staffing of medical nurses. And this was entered into June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two in the total amount of five million thirty-two dollars and five hundred dollars. So that means we gave them seven million in the general fund plus another five million, and they needed an extension to spend to spend the five million through ARPA? Not for you to answer, that's just to go on record. I have concerns, the citizens have concerns.
Chairman. Commissioner Davis. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that seven million was not an open check?
According to her.
It's earmarked, it was earmarked for inpatient care.
Earmarked for inpatient care, which means those go into emergency rooms, so for that.
When we.
Does the.
I'm sorry.
Does the hospital have some issues? Yes. Do we need a hospital in this county?
Yes, we do.
Most definitely, yes. Um, the the everyone, from what I understand, is is under staff with nursing right now. There's a shortage of nurses across the United States. So, I'm not going to sit here and want to say that is only a Southern Regional problem. We've got to begin to do what we can, both to be fiscally responsible with the citizens' money, but also be deliberate and intentional in keeping this hospital here in Clayton County.
Let me, hold on a second, let me just add to that because part of that money that I believe has not been spent is because they have not been able to hire enough nurses. Uh, and I'm sure Chief Murk- might be able to clue us in. But let me uh say, uh, once again, that that five million, seven million was for inpatient care. And we have to take care of our citizens here in Clayton County. And we need to make sure, please, uh, we need to make sure that, yes, we are being financially responsible with taxpayers' money. But part of those taxpayers are a consti- constituents who deserve the very best in care.
I agree.
And I think it was disingenuous of you, Commissioner Franklin, to say it's unsafe hospital. Because the hospice came a long way since prime healthcare has taken over. And I have total and complete confidence in their ability to serve this community, and I would hate to see them go anywhere else.
Let me be specific, Mr. Chair. You all like to say Felicia. I go by information that is written. And I could tell you the name that was spoken to us in a meeting was Dr. Youngblood. I spoke to Dr. Youngblood personally, myself, because there was a parent whose child was sitting in the emergency room and having a diabetic attack and was not taken back until several hours later when they reached out to me. And this just happened after we approved the seven million. This is not Felicia. Felicia represents a group of citizens who have asked me questions. And when I reached out to said physicians, which I can confirm, as of October, they will be at another hospital because the hospital has become concerns for unsafe. So that is not Felicia, that is coming from this specific service providers who was spoken by the young lady that is over the hospital. So don't say that I am giving anything disingenuous, that was the reason why they pulled out. I deal in facts and we need the hospital, but I also need people to live that go to that hospital. I need people to be safe in that hospital. I need this hospital to understand how they got to get the largest employers, which is Clayton County Public Schools, Clayton County Government, who majority of us have a insurance that according to my conversations and according to what I have seen in writing, that they have stated that we have a standard and a level of care and those individuals may go to A or B hospital. As a government entity, we say that we want to save the taxpayers' money. We want to bring better businesses into our community. We want to bring in places to where we can go and eat. But yet and still, we give and we have given and given to a private entity. That's why I read this. It's a private entity, but we bring our directors before us and make them beg for money to keep us safe. I just want levels of accountability because if we need extension for the expenditure of five million dollars that they've had since June of twenty thirty of twenty twenty-two, but we done gave them another seven million. And to be quite honest, you don't even have to say anything, sir, because to be honest, in that meeting. No, no, he can say anything, something if you want. But the point is, in that meeting with people present, nobody was attacked. Let me say that first of all, these citizens spoke very educatedly. They supported the hospital and said, what can we do to help? But they were given no answers for the seven million. Do you know exactly what they were told? And the witnesses are there. They were told the seven million was spent before you even sent it to us. Well, how the seven million spent, but we extended five million to use a little bit later? It just don't add up.
Well, there's a lot of explanation that can be given that's behind the scenes, I would say, that that the hospital can account for. And they should be, and I I agree, I can agree with you on that. Uh, at the end of the day, it's about safety, but also just because you have, and I hate that the lady or whoever you reference had a bad experience.
It's the CEO of of Southern Regional, sir.
I'm talking about somebody you said had a bad experience.
Oh, it's not just somebody, it's several.
The few, but also let's not you lose lose focus of the thousands who have went through there and had excellent care. Because I've heard people that tell me that that hospital is a lifesaver to them. And Representative Berno was one of them, who says she would definitely prefer to go there than anywhere else. But do you have something to add, uh?
Chairman, this, uh, Chief Murkison, hold on, let's hear from Chief Murkison right quick.
What I can speak to is the reason for the extension. So I understand we're talking about two separate pots of money that were approved for two very different reasons, okay? So the ARPA funds that we are referencing tonight were approved by the board back at twenty twenty-one, um, as the ARPA funds came in. Southern Regional was allotted five point oh three two um five hundred for the purposes of recruitment, retention, um, the hiring of nurses, the hiring of qualified staff to be able to keep the hospital functioning at a level. They've drawn down on as much of that money as they can. The reason they have not spent it all and the reason that we are here asking for the extension is per the agreements they had signed by the board, their performance period expired June of twenty twenty-two. So they could not spend any more money in that category until we got this issue straightened out. We did not realize until, to Commissioner's point, we were going through auditing all of the funds to see where we stand with ARPA, how much ARPA money is left, who's drawing down, who's not drawing down. Did we realize that the very first articles of agreement for the initial half of the three point two six six only covered the very first performance period? It did not extend through the whole three point six six. If that was not the issue, is my belief, Southern Regional would have already spent the million because agency costs for nurses are still at an all-time high. So they did the right thing by not moving forward and continue to spend money that they didn't have articles of agreement approved by this board to cover. So that's what we're asking for tonight. They've done what they said they would do. They've spent the funds down, all but one million seventeen thousand. The board graciously extends that tonight, it'll probably be gone in the next two to three months, given what they're paying. Other part of money, completely separate reasons why and completely. Other part of money, completely separate reasons why and completely different categories for what those funds are being spent on. That is, to the board's point, to cover indigent care for our uninsured citizens. So that's what this is covering, so it's not that we're asking to extend the five million, we're not. It's only the one point oh one seven that's outside of the performance period that was approved by the board. The other issue was the performance period approved by the board was two years short of what's allowed by ARPA. So rather the performance period ended in June of twenty-two, ARPA allows you to spend those funds through December of twenty-four with a two-year auditing and reclamation period to go through and make sure so that the final reports due to Treasury by the end of twenty-six. So that's why we're asking that this just extended out to the extent that ARPA does. Will it last that long? No. They've gone through the other, whatever that math is, three point something million dollars rather expediently.
Commissioner Davis, you have some. Any other questions? Those in favor, I. Oppose?
Nay.
Four one, it passes. Next.
Our next item is resolution, item number thirty-one, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one eighty-four.
Resolution twenty twenty-three one eighty-four is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to return unobligated emergency rental assistance funding to the United States Department of Treasury. It's authorized the chairman to execute the agreement and any documents relating thereto and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplishing the intended this resolution to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
How much is the amount?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners. The total amount is three million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-four cents.
Ooh, okay, is that inclusive what we voted for to send back before? We voted on something about a couple of meetings ago? How much did we, is that the inclusive of that amount or is it separate?
This is-
So how much did we send back before?
Talk into the mic, please.
That was a different type of funding. If my memory serves me correct, but I don't have that number with me tonight, I can look that up and get it back to you.
And this funding, the three point three million that we're sending back, back would have been used to keep people in their homes or in their rented homes?
Yes, ma'am. During, during the initial phase, the first phase of emergency rental assistance, our nonprofits did a tremendous job of expending over twenty-one million dollars to the citizens. But there was a tight timeline, December twenty-ninth was, was the absolute deadline. And they just weren't able to fully expend the final amount of that, that total allotted amount.
Okay, thank you.
How much of that did we spend?
Did, did, didn't we not spend?
Last pot of money.
Twenty-one million, six thousand, and forgot the rest.
So we dispersed the lion's share.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, I. I oppose, it's unanimous.
Our next item, items are board appointments, starting with item number thirty-five.
All right, first board appointment is to the Board of Appeals. Larry Bussey's term on the Board of Appeals will expire September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. New term will be three years, expiring on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I move that we reappoint Mr. Larry Bussey to the Board of Appeals.
Suck into motion, any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Community Service Board. Minister Vanessa Battle's term on the Clayton County Community Service Board will expire September fifteenth, twenty-three. New term is for three years, expiring on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. Commissioner Anderson.
Good evening, I move that we reappoint Minister Vanessa Battle to the Community Service Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is also to the Community Service Board. Ansel Davis's term on the community, on the community service board will expire September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. New term is for three years, expiring September fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I move that we reappoint Mr. Ansel Davis to the Community Service Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrik, any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Next appointment is to the Zoning Advisory Group. Kevin Lewis's term on the zag board will expire on September second, twenty twenty-three. New term is for three years, expiring September second, twenty twenty-six. Commissioner Anderson.
I move that we reappoint Mr. Kevin Lewis to the zag board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is also to the Zoning Advisory Group. Arnold Goodson's term on the zoning board will expire on September second, twenty twenty-three. New term is for three years, expiring on September second, twenty twenty-six. Commissioner Davis.
I move that we reappoint Mr. Arnold Goodson to the zoning advisory group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
The next items are zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. And each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within a ten-minute time allotment. When time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Our first item is item number forty, BLC twenty-two eleven dash zero two five seven, which is a conditional use permit to operate a convenience store without a fueling station. This is presented by our-
Good evening to the chair and to the vice chair and board of commissioners. I'm Carlotta Singleton, speaking on behalf of the Community Development Department. For planning and zoning, we present cases for public hearing. This evening we have, this evening we have three cases that we're presenting for public hearing and one case for decision only that has already been through the public hearing process. First case is BLC twenty-two eleven dash zero two five seven, which is a conditional use permit to operate a C-store, convenience store without fueling station. This is a case that has previously been before the board. A request by Rayjab Catita, a conditional use permit to operate a C-store, convenience store without fueling station at one thousand and four Mount Zion Road, Morrow, Georgia, three zero two six zero, which is in the general business zoning district. Said property consisting of approximately point two five seven acre and is further known as parcel one three one four five eight dash D zero zero eight and located between Imperial, Imperial Drive and Lake Drive and Personal Place. The applicant is here. As you can see, the zoning for this particular property, the future land use is, and the future land use as shown. And then the aerial map shows the location of the building and the property. This presents the site plan that was presented by the applicant, showing the location and the improvements proposed. Some of the improvements included landscaping. Another concept, we did ask that the applicant improve and add additional landscaping to the property to improve the aesthetics of the property. General photos showing the location of the convenience store. And this is prior to any improvement that the applicants may have made since the last meeting, including those landscape improvements. A building elevation showing the existing building. And this was an existing building that the applicant is leasing. And the applicant is here for any questions.
Well, the applicant will come for it.
Staff recommendations included approval. Again, those conditions was based on, with landscaping. And during the zag recommend, zag meeting, the zag denied due to the applicant not being present.
Please take the podium, sir. State your name for us, county residents, and whether or not you want to save any minutes for a rebuttal because there will be a public hearing, usually two or three minutes.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Raymond Fernandez.
Mr. Chair, I think this is a, this is decision only.
Oh, is it? Yes, okay. Well, thank you. All right. I will let you greet us though. Got anything to say to the board?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. We're just a small business, trying to make a difference. And trying to get this thing done as soon as possible. We, we've been waiting on this for like a year now. And I have a lot of types and a lot of loans to pay because to, in order to get this business started. So I would be really obliged and thankful if y'all make a decision in a positive way for us. We'd be very happy and try to make this really beneficial for the community, community around where we are opening this business at. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
I have some, searching for my notes. I'm about to wing it, I'm about to wing it.
Put your glasses on.
I've gone ahead and looked. I've gone ahead and looked at the property. And the only thing that was not on there is, I guess, the shrubbers along the sides, that was it. We had some conditions, can those conditions be read?
I'm sorry, but the conditions-
I'm sorry, take the podium for me. Sorry, everybody here.
Three conditions, well, the conditions that we have listed, that is only, the only matter that we have the resolve is the landscaping.
Just read the conditions, all three of them.
I'm sorry, do I not have the correct? Go back to the, to the presentation. Is there another slide? For that particular case, I'd only show, I don't show another condition.
There are three conditions on there.
Is there another copy of the, of the agenda?
You would not have those conditions, would you?
Mr. Chair, I have the conditions.
Please read them, Madam Plurk.
The first one, paving and restripping parking lots. Number two, add landscaping along property frontage. Parentheses, no landscaping planned submitted. Close parentheses, number three, the facade shall be brought into compliance with section six point eight, which is the architectural and appearance for commercial and industrial.
And I would like to add another, two more conditions. One, with this being right across the street from a school, that no adult magazines, paraphernalia are sold within that store, as well as no of your pipes, CBD pipes and things of that nature sold in there as well.
Could you take the podium, please, sir? Applicant. You heard the additional two?
Yes, sir, I did, yeah.
Conditions?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree to them?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. With that said, I move that we approve B zero, BLC twenty-two eleven dash zero two five seven with the five conditions as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. The next case is number forty-one, agenda item BLC dash twenty-three oh four, zero three oh eight, conditional use permit to operate a boutique hotel with fifty rooms in the Ellenwood Plan Unit Development District. A request by Creative Community Concepts LLC for a conditional use permit to operate a boutique hotel at thirty-one forty-six, thirty-one forty, excuse me, Anvil Block Road, Ellenwood, Georgia, three zero two nine four. Said process property consisting of approximately six point seventy-two acres is further known as parcel one two two three four D dash A zero zero one. Said property is in a mixed-use zoning district, area of the Ellenwood Plan Unit Development and located between Luntford Drive and Boulder Crest Road. This map shows the existing PUD location. The aerial photo also showing the existing PUD location within the Ellenwood Plan Unit Development. This is the proposed site plan as presented by the applicant and references all of the proposed parking, handicap parking, and the scrap footage of the proposed building. Building elevation showing the renderings of the, go back. The exterior frontage of the building. Next. And this is the hotel section of the proposed building. On the front of the hotel, this is the side exterior. And then also the rear of the building from the, from the hotel section. This shows the floor plan as proposed in terms of the boutique hotel and then also the event center space. About some seconds rendering. This is particular, a potential layout of the event space as it would be operating. Zoning Advisory Group recommended approval with conditions. And the site, one of those conditions, the site plan and elevation shall be in substantial conformity with the plans provided on June fifteenth. The zag recommended approval with conditions. Attendance and of all events shall not exceed peak capacity of the event. Security plan shall be reinforced by, during all events, security cameras shall be operable at all times. Site plan and elevation shall be in substantial conformity with the plans provided on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Staff recommended to table the first building evaluations not to receive, prior to, not, not being received prior to the BLC meeting. This evening we have approximately twenty-seven conditions that we'd like to add for consideration, for approval. The first being the site plan dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and elevations dated July seventh, twenty twenty-three shall be in substantial conformity with the plans provided. Developers shall provide benches, trash receptacle, decorative crosswalks, planners, kiosks, and other street furniture which appropriate, which is appropriate throughout the develop, appropriated throughout the development. There shall be no self-service laundry facilities for guest use within the building. All utilities shall be located underground. No extended stay or suite hotel shall be permitted. Five percent of the code required parking spaces must be electric vehicle charging. No commercially licensed truck, trade trucks should be parked facing Anvil Block Road. Sonnets shall be placed in the front stating that no parking of commercial licensed trade trucks along Anvil Block Road. Adequate landscaping and green space must be provided around the hotel, including the use of trees, shrubs, and other plants to enhance the visual appeal of the property. Outside lighting at the edge of the property should be directed away from the residential project- project, projected from the structure, directing light away from the residential neighborhoods, and using shorter lighting poles. Building occupancy shall be, shall be subject to approval by the Fire Marshal. No outside storage or permanent parking of equipment or vehicles shall be allowed. Owner, developer shall implement crosswalk and median improvements at the intersection of Anvil Block Road and Lonsford Road to enhance pedestrian safety, subject to the review and approval of the County Transportation and Development Department and GDOT. The development will include sidewalks along the property lines for walkability. The hotel must have a plan of security, traffic approved by the Police Department and the Transportation and Development Department, and construct it before the issuance of any business licenses. We're on number thirteen. With regard to outdoor space of the GM Conference Center, there shall be a nine P M curfew on amplified music year-round, Sunday through Thursday. With regard to outdoor space of the GM Conference Center, there shall be a ten P M curfew on amplified music year-round Friday, Friday and Saturday. The GM Conference Center will comply with the Clayton County Nords ordinance. The hotel must provide appropriate noise mitigation measures, such as soundproofing to minimize the impact of indoor and outdoor noise on neighborhood, neighboring properties. Landscape plans shall be submitted to the county prior to construction for approval. Landscaping shall include structures to mitigate noise from the venue, including but not limited to noise reduction planning, walls, and et cetera. Facility with, shall have cameras with twenty-four hour surveillance and monitoring indoor and outdoor for all areas of the hotel. Security cameras shall be operable at all times. Security plan shall be enforced during all events. Attendance for all events shall not exceed peak capacity of the event space. Access to each govern, each guest room shall be through an inside lobby supervised at all hours. Key card access will be required but not limited guest rooms, and doorways, elevators that offer access to corridors where guest rooms are located will be provided only to patrons that are there overnight stay. Adequate lighting should be in a place in walkways and parking areas for safety and security. The hotel must submit a traffic impact analysis that considers and mitigate the impact of the development on the existing roadway system. The analysis should include trip generation rates, traffic and volume projections, and proposed improvements to accommodate site traffic, per the approval of the Transportation and Development Department. The developer will provide a traffic study prior to debt construction and conduct another study one year after construction to evaluate any changes in traffic conditions and proposed mitigation measures, per the approval of the Transportation and Development Department. Lastly, prior to development activities, the owner and developer shall meet with the County Transportation Division to develop a proposed hall plan for truck traffic routing during the project, final traffic plans, and notify the county of any major plans impeding traffic during construction and major events. The plan will be subject to final review and approval.
All right.
And the applicant is here.
Applicant present, come forward.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. My name is Raquel Obumba. I'm a resident of District One in Clayton County.
Would you like to save any minutes for rebuttal, or have we already had this?
We have not had this.
Okay. Any, any minutes for rebuttal?
Sure, yes, two to three, three minutes.
Three minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, I am pleased to present, uh, the proposed Grand GM Venue and Hotel is a mixed-use development, which will, as has already been stated, it includes fifty hotel rooms, a sixteen thousand square foot ballroom, and four twenty-five hundred square foot conference and meeting spaces, three upscale restaurants, and a spa. The hotel rooms will allow guests of events of the property the opportunity to stay onsite before and after events. Since most of these events will happen over the weekend, the hotel rooms will be marketed to executives of the local warehouses and movie studios during the week. The hotel will be an upscale hotel and not offer extended stay options. This project, we're hoping will serve as a catalyst and an example to adjacent property owners of the types of development that the county, the community would like to see and patronize. We anticipate this project will create an additional a hundred to a hundred and fifty jobs, and these jobs would include management, event staff, restaurant staff, spa staff, and security staff. The project team agrees to comply with all conditions identified by Commissioner Anderson and the community, as we want to be a good community partner throughout the construction process and beyond. We are confident this project will be an asset to not only District One, but the county as a whole, and we welcome the support of these conditional use permits, which is this one and the next one.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Please come forward, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tanika Askew. I'm with Village Park. Uh, so I just wanted to come and speak on the property owner, um, as well as the property owner's team. They did come to the community several times, and they took time to meet with the members of our community in Village Park and beyond, to really understand what we needed as a community on several different occasions. We also work with the property owner, as well as their team members, and Raquel, to develop conditions that were in agreement with the members of what our community was looking for for future development. We are also, um, looking for safety and so for sake of safety, elevation of our communities, economic standing, and aesthetics. These conditions were researched and put into place because we feel like future projects would also benefit with this as a staple. With these conditions, I do believe that we can move the eloquent P U D in District One forward in future projects, with this as an example of what we're looking for as a catalyst in future developers as well. I want to thank the owner, the developer, their team, as well as Commissioner Anderson and the Clayton County staff for continuously setting up these meetings and collaborating with us throughout this project, and also for working in partnership to help elevate the Ellenwood P U D.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody oppose?
How you doing? My name is Ron, Ron Robinson. I live in Ellenwood, less than two miles from this development. I've been a resident of Clayton County since nineteen sixty-three, so I've been here a while, seen a lot of changes. Some changes are good, some changes are not so good. I don't think that this is the, um, just to make it clear, I'm not in favor of this development. I don't think this is the right time nor the right place. There are three things that hotels typically look for when, uh, they're being built. Entertainment, dining, and, uh, entertainment, dining, and shopping. The only shopping that's in this area is Walmart. The only dining is Waffle House. There is no entertainment. I, uh, I don't see the need for any of that, for building a, uh, development like this at this time. This is the fourth presentation that I've heard, and oftentimes, the gentleman has referred to this as being similar to, uh, Emory, Emory Conference Center. If we had a hotel, if we had a university and a, um, hospital on the corner of Boulder Crest and, and Anvil Block, maybe it would make sense. But we don't have that. Let's get a hospital first. Let's get a university first. This would be an excellent project to build next to Clayton State University, but there's nothing in our area to support it. She talks about restaurants, that there's going to be a five-star restaurant. The builder doesn't decide what a restaurant's going to be. The guests decide, the critics decide. You can build anything you want, but unless the critics and patrons patronize it and decide it's a five-star restaurant, it is not. The area does not support that. I ask you, please, do not, this is not the correct time nor the correct place. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to?
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County, District Three. Several years ago, we had the opportunity to put a hotel right at the corner of Old Dixie Tower Boulevard, the entrance, and we denied it. It is insane to approve this hotel because of the location. The better location would be right there at Old Dixie by Upper Riverdale Road. Access to the highway, there are restaurants. It's much better suited for that area, not Ellenwood.
Anybody else? Miss Mann?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, I want to speak in favor of this development. I'm sitting here listening. Give this lady opportunity. If she capitalizes, the rest of that stuff will work out. If it don't work out, they can take their losses. So, I'm in favor, so. I encourage you all to give her an opportunity for her project to work.
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Anybody else oppose? All right. Commissioner Anderson. Oh, wait a minute, we got rebuttal time. Yes, ma'am, you got three minutes.
Well, I guess those in opposition, um, as I've stated with, um, when I've met with the community, at the end, the owner purchased this property in two thousand eighteen and has been waiting to develop this property. It's right now sitting as vacant land. It's not earning the type of tax dollars that could really, truly, um, add to not only the tax roll, but also to, um, provide us in District One, as a resident myself, somewhere to go so I don't have to drive all the way to Atlanta or drive south to, uh, patronize very nice restaurants. Again, as a resident of the area, you know, if I have, um, a large event, you know, it would be nice to have everything all encompassed into one. I actually did have my wedding at Emory Conference Center, and so it was very nice to be able to just walk right upstairs after and not have to drive far, um, to, um, patronize a very nice hotel. I do think that, I, I, I use this with the, the owner, I use the example of a Marriott. At some point, Marriott had one hotel, and now look at it. It started as something, as just in vision and a dream, and look at it now. And that's the same for all these other international hotel groups. I just really think that this could be a value add. I don't see why it wouldn't be District One. You know, again, we have the land, we own the land. Now it's just a matter of approval to get this project going.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Again, I just want to thank, um, the Ellenwood C P U. We have had, um, several, um, meetings on the boutique, on our, um, the boutique hotel. It's a great idea. If we want to bring great things to the county and give new entrepreneurs a chance, when we ask certain hotel brands to come in, they don't want to come in for their varied reasons. However, you know, we want the Starbucks, we want the places like that, but we also want people who are new entrepreneurs to come in and grace our county and bring their businesses to our county and, and pay tax dollars to our county as well. So, um, at this time, based on the conditions as well, I would like to approve the C U P to operate a boutique hotel with fifty rooms in the Ellenwood Plan, um, Unit Development District, along with the twenty-seven, I don't have to read them again, right? I told you, I was, uh, twenty-seven, twenty-seven conditions. Again, I want to thank, um, everyone, um, Ms. Tanika from the Ellenwood C, um, C P U. Ellenwood C P U has worked hard, and, um, they have come together with this hotel, and I just believe that this is going to continue, make, this is going to move Clayton County forward. So, again, thank you, and Ms. Raquel, thank you for all that you're doing to move District One forward. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? Those in favor, I?
Aye.
Oppose, issue now.
Congratulations, Ms. Raquel.
Congratulations.
We got one more part, got a fast one.
One more piece. The next case is the companion case to, uh, for the special event center, and we do ask that the conditions that have been read for the previous case and the presentation that has been shown for the previous case stand as this case is being read. Item number forty-two, B O C twenty-three zero-five zero-one-four, conditional use permit to operate a special event center in the Elmwood Plan Unit Development District. A request by Creative Community Concepts LLC for a conditional use permit to operate a special event center at thirty-one forty Anvil Block Road, Ellenwood, Georgia, three zero-two-nine-four. Said property consisting of approximately seven, six point seven-two acres is further known as parcel one-two-two-three-four-D-dash-A-zero-zero-one. Said property is in a mixed-use area of the Ellenwood Plan Unit Development and located between Lonsford Drive and Boulder Crest Road. The applicant is here. You've heard her present, and this is public hearing.
Applicant.
Good evening, again. Um, Raquel Obumba, um, resident of District One in Clayton County. I won't go through my spiel again, but I do want to...
Save any minutes?
I, yes, three minutes.
Three minutes.
And, um, I do want to emphasize that the, um, special event space or the event space portion of this project is geared towards your family reunions, your wedding receptions, your conferences, um, think bridal shower, think baby shower, those types of, um, special, um, events that will happen. We want to have, add an additional space in this, um, area, in this district that everyone in the county and beyond would be able to utilize. Thank you.
All right, this is public hearing. Anyone want to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of applicant's request?
Hello, everyone. Again, my name is Tanika with the Village Park, um, community. As someone who also often works with entrepreneurs, small businesses, um, large businesses as well, there are no current spaces or event spaces hosted in our community that would allow us to have small things such as, um, small gatherings, happy hours, small meetings, large meetings in our community. Oftentimes, what happens is everyone is sent to Atlanta or surrounding areas. They don't come to Clayton County because it's just seen as someplace that doesn't have anything nice. This space would also lend the opportunity for organizations not only to host these events, but to provide and lead to additional economic opportunities, not only for the county, but also for the business owners in the county. So, the entrepreneurs that provide catering services, the entrepreneurs that provide security, the entrepreneurs who also provide business planning and event services, those would be really great opportunities for the county. This will also be a really great opportunity for individuals, um, at the Clayton County, Clayton State University, to partner with this hotel, as well as the event space, to understand how to organize and work with their programs within Clayton State. It's internship opportunities, fellowship opportunities, et cetera. So, I do believe that this could lead to additional growth and opportunities to serve as a catalyst for what's to come in the, in the community. Thank you.
Anybody else in favor of? Anybody in opposition to?
Ron Robinson, Ellenwood, Georgia. Just like to restate my opposition to this project. The gentleman spoke about capitalization, and, uh, to me, the numbers don't seem to add up. Like I said, I've been to four of the meetings, uh, where I've listened to this presentation. Each time, the, uh, number of the dollars that will be going into the development has changed. Construction cost right now is about a hundred and forty thousand dollars per...
Construction cost right now is about a hundred and forty thousand dollars per room for a hotel. That's including lobby and common space, not restaurants, ball space, ballroom space, banquet space. So she's talking about seven million dollars in construction costs, when she told me that they planned on spending five to six million. That was the first time. Then it was changed to eight or nine million. So if they spend seven million dollars on the hotel, that leaves three million for a spa and three restaurants. How can that happen?
Thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak in opposition, too?
Mister Chairman, I'd like to say so.
Come forward, please.
Mister Chairman, members of the board, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I, I come from an entrepreneurial background, and I, I wanna see somebody succeed, but you do have to take in consideration that if it doesn't succeed, of which I hope it does, what is the exit strategy for this piece of property? Do you allow it to downgrade and instead of a, a, a five-star ho, uh, restaurant, do you downgrade it to a two or three? If, if you don't have the hotels being filled up with, with out-of-town guests, do you now turn it into an extended-stay hotel? These are the questions that need to be answered before we go forward. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition, too? Commissioner Anderson. No, wait a minute, she gave more minutes. I keep forgetting about you.
So in, in response to those that are opposed, I would say the owner and the developer has probably the most interest out of anybody in this room, in this county, and probably this world if he is going to expend this much money to have this proper, project succeed. Obviously, we don't know what the future holds, but I know that I'm personally know the owner, I personally know the person who's going to be spending this money. He is going to ensure that this is a project and this remains an asset, again, to the best of his ability. At the end of the day, I will say, construction costs always change. As someone who has worked in construction, you always have contingency, you always have, you have to be flexible. If we stay stuck on a number, then that's when things don't happen because we can't be flexible. So that, that would be my rebuttal.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson.
Good evening. Again, as we, as, as the gentleman stated, we, we've gone back and forth. So a lot of the, a lot of the times when things have changed, it's been based on things that the CPU has added, taken away, things of that nature. So that is something that the owner has taken into consideration, and that's why the numbers have changed. At this time, I, I'm gonna go on and to approve, to operate the special event, the CUP to operate the special event center in the Ellenwood Plan Unit Development District, and we don't, the conditions will be.
As stated.
As stated.
Sarah Suckin.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hamburgh. Are there any questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed, issue announced.
Good evening. This is BOC dash twenty-three zero-six zero-three-three-zero, which is requested by the Board of Commissioners to rezonate ten-four-six-six Terror Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six, from AG Agriculture to GB General Business, to reduce the nonconformity of an existing billboard. Said property consisting of plus or minus zero point four-zero acres is further known as parcel zero-six-zero-nine-four-zero-nine-five-zero-one-four and located between Terror Road and Flicker Road. This is just south of the Quover Center at Terror and, Terror Road and Terror Boulevard. This property was rezoned from AG to HI in May nineteen-eighty, and subsequent, and afterwards, G dot permanent numbered N three-zero-six-eight was issued on August first nineteen-eighty-one for the existing billboard. This was rezoned from AI, HI three-eighteen, May two thousand and eight as part of the adoption of the new two thousand and eight zoning ordinance at that time and zoning map. This is the current zoning map, this is the Google imagery, and this is a, a Google Street View of the proposed, I mean, of the existing billboard. Staff's recommendation was approval, and Zach's recommendation was approval. The property owner does apologize for not being here, he had another emergency meeting to attend to.
Okay, but this is a request from the.
This is request from the Board of Commissioners.
All right, at this time, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of?
Mia Ballinger, District Four. I am just wondering about a sidewalk project. Is there anything in place for sidewalks? Because as you know, Terror Boulevard, regardless, not Terror, but Terror Road.
Please address us, Ms. Ballinger.
I'm sorry. Are you right? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, finish your question.
But is there a sidewalk project going to be put in place, or are they already doing? What is really going on?
I can answer that one. I do have a question about this, though. The sidewalk project is going in down there. In fact, I saw something that you stated, now welcome you to come down through the area, and you'll see the sidewalks are already being laid.
Okay, thank you.
That's close to the railroad, so I, I have a couple of questions about this.
Now, would it be a continuous sidewalk or just?
They are contiguous.
Alrighty then, alright, I'm all for it.
They are.
Anybody else in favor, wanna speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of? Anybody in opposition, too? Anybody opposed? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, I, anything that we approve, BLC twenty-three, I can't even read this now, twenty-three zero-six dash zero-three-thirty, that's read.
Sarah Suckin.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, one quick question. I just want to ensure, because this is across from District Three, and my concern is if we, number one, change this to general business, now we're allowing for someone to come and build something in an area that has limited space. I have concern about that, number one. Number two, again, Mister Reed, so we're saying a billboard cannot be in the zoning of agricultural? Is that definitive? Because if it can be, I'm just concerned about, again, building something in a very, very small area that we're already working on a very dangerous intersection right here in the same area.
So the, the issue, the reason why this is coming before the board and why this is board-initiated is because that part, that parcel was rezoned in error.
Okay.
So it should not have been rezoned from, was it HI before? From HI to AG in two thousand and eight. However, it doesn't make sense to rezone it back to HI because there's no HI in the area, so the closest, the closest zoning classification that's in line with that would be the GB that's to, I guess, the northwest of the existing property.
Can we give it a conditional use? Because again, I've been out there with DCOO. Do you see where this area is? This is coming off of that, that space. If we could, it'd be better if we could see an aerial view, and I think the board can see the concerns. This is along the side where the railroad track runs, and then on top of it within Terror Road, we're dealing with some ingress and egress concerns. So if we rezonate this to general business, then that's gonna mean that, see how close it is to that railroad? That's your railroad right there. So that means somebody has already zoned, is already zoned, they can just begin to build in conformity with general business. So is there a better way to do this, to be able to get the billboard there? Because if we zone it, we can't stop them from building in that little, small area.
I believe that the property's shape would really limit there being anything on that property that's consistent with your GB, because not only does have to be, not only do you have to have the proper zoning, you have to be able to build whatever you're trying to build in that space. And, and Terrace can probably talk a little bit more to that, but the, the topography doesn't look like you can build anything there, and the only reason why that we're rezoning it back is because of that billboard being in a, if something happens to it and it falls, he could not put that back in a, exist, in the AG as it's currently existing there.
I'm clear on that.
Right.
But let me ask you legally, if it's zoned GB, we can talk about what could be, what shouldn't be, but legally, once it's zoned GB, can I go out there and build me a little hut? I'm just saying, somebody, and build a hut because it's already zoned? Or do they have to come back before the board?
They can build, they don't have to come back to the board to get approval to build something that's on GB. They have to go to planning staff and make sure that whatever they're trying to build is consistent with our ordinances, and because of the way, of the shape of that piece of property, it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to build anything that would require any foot traffic or anything on that property. But again, I, it's difficult to tell from that map, and I'll, I'll kinda defer to either Terrace or Director Agk to, to clarify that, but it is a very, very narrow sliver of property, and, and had, had the map not been changed in the first place, he could have built something HI on that property.
Gotcha.
And, and Commissioner Franklin, I, I've met with Patrick, Mister Agk, numerous times on this matter, and because it was zoned in there, and we went through the steps, like you're saying, to figure out what was the best, this turned out to be the best to protect us as well. That's why we won this with GB.
Any other questions? Those in favor, I.
I.
Opposed, issue announced.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the board with a total time of twenty minutes for public comments. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Ike Andinka.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ike Naduka. I'm a, I'm a.
What's your county residence, sir?
Oh, county residence, oh, Poland County. Yes, indeed. I'm, where you believe global, and we are a no-kill animal shelter. We run those. I am the president and the founder. We've been in business for nine-plus years, and we've been looking for opportunities down here in Georgia, and I was made aware that there might be some opportunities down here in Clayton County. We believe that dogs are not just man's best friend, but a community's best friend. We add a mental health component to the business that we do, where we believe that dogs can be a support system to the elderly, a companion to the veterans, and love and support for their youth. So I'm just here to kinda make a play over here and hopefully be a part of this community.
Have you had any discussion with our police chief?
No, I haven't.
He's right there in the back, lurking in the back. Please, get with him before you leave.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County, Madam Clerk, Commissioner Chairman Turner. At the August first public comments, Mister Wayne Matthews said, quote, "We should not make accusations about Commissioner Franklin because it's childish." Here are the facts. She falsified the affidavit for disclosure, filed a false police report because she was denied credit reimbursements that violated travel policy. Has a Clayton County Board of Ethics case pending for disclosure, section seventy dash seventy. Has a State Ethics Commission case for campaign expenditures and payments. Voted to pay for her legal fees and lawsuits violating abstention, section seventy dash sixty-five, and conflict of interest two dash thirty-seven. Commissioner Franklin violated her oath of office, code of conduct for ethics, financial governance, conflict of interests, and disclosure and abstention. Do all under here, in case you wanna see it. Commissioner Franklin wants to be the chairman, but she voted to move public comments to the end and limit, I'll voice the two minutes, and abuses point of order. Those are the facts.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Those are the facts, and they are not childish. Also, one last thing. Commissioner Anderson, I Googled the definition of vendor. It is not an entertainer, it's not an artist, it's not a performer.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you, sir.
And I implore the clerk to strike everything except that I'm running for chair, because everything else was accusations, including that last picture that showed Commissioner Davis and not me.
Christopher Gallagher. Yeah, the article was inside.
That was a good one of you, though.
Christopher Gallagher. Thank you, sir.
And that's protocol, Mister Chair.
What's that?
That was protocol.
That was protocol.
It needs to be stricken from record.
Christopher Gallagher, Clayton County. Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman. When they came through Rivers Edge there, and they started redoing the roads, there's like they did one section all the way down, days later came back to do the other section, they didn't blend together places that they patched and everything, and, you know, that they're crumbling. Well, now that they're gonna start with the walking trail and all this heavy industrial equipment and everything there, you know, this is really gonna take a toll on them. They've just been paved and they're already crumbling there. I talked to Rose Jackson, and she said she talked to Commissioner Franklin there, and that some gentleman came out and they were claiming, oh, well, it's because the roads originally weren't done properly there. Well, my question is, why is it like seventeen years ago when they came and resurfaced the roads, they were beautiful, there were no problems, they looked great, they held up for years there? And if they originally from day one weren't done right, you know, do they plan to rectify this or what? When we got a lot of this heavy equipment in there, since they've just been done and they're already crumbling after just being done, you know, what's gonna happen? Is there a plan to deal with this? That's what I was wondering.
You have a response?
Yes, I sent it over to your staff and I asked the very same question. I gotta give DCOO credit, he's been sending it out, but I agree with you and Ms. Jackson. I talked to her for almost an hour yesterday.
Yeah, I appreciate it, 'cause last time they were done years ago, they were beautiful, they had no problem, and they resurfaced it, and it lasted for years, so I don't know why now it's a problem, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mister Gallagher.
Shereen Cummings.
Good evening, Chairman and to the board. My name is Shereen Cummings, and I'm a resident of Clayton County for the last thirty years. My name is Shereen Cummings and I'm a resident of Clayton County for the last thirty years. I am here to complain about the defects office of Clayton County. Due to I have grandchildren that are in the defects system and the system has not been working. This is her ninth case with defects. And, um, she was arrested at defects for terrorist threat and a firearm. And was released the next day. They have not removed my grandkids. I protested on this past Friday with other parents that was concerned about their children or grandchildren that is in defects custody. Defects custody also lets us know when we call in that the call is anonymous and they can't share information. All the information that was given to this defects department, I don't want to call names, but it was shared with my daughter. I'm the parental mother of those grandchildren. And I'm standing up here against my daughter because she's on drugs, she's an unfit parent, and they have yet to remove these kids. I'm concerned about the children of Clayton County's welfare and safety with the staff that is down there that is not doing their jobs. I follow the chain of command, have yet to get any kind of assistance. I went through Deputy Kimberly Scott and also D'Amica Manning. I made numerous calls, no answer, no return to emails. And the staff that's working at the defects office is assisting and aiding and abetting my daughter in what she is doing. I don't know where else to go. I've been to the Sheriff Department many a time. Detective Cooper have told me when I do get a chance to get my say in court, he will assist me because they have not been consistent with him in getting the kids down for a forensic investigation. I have all the proof, pictures, texts, everything to prove all the allegations that has been made. But for whatever reason, defects in Clayton County are failing our children of Clayton County. We had an incident a couple of weeks ago about a little boy that's in a hospital with defects. She wanted to talk about that. My heart goes out to that child, but I wanted to speak about what is going on with my grandchildren.
Thank you, ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Mia Ballinger.
Good evening, Mia Ballinger, District Four. Alrighty, I am here standing in honor of Officer Armando Mendoza. As you know, Armando Mendoza died on Terra Boulevard, Terra, T-E-R-R-O-R Boulevard, April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. His mother has dedicated a bistro in his honor. Unfortunately, the bistro will close ironically on, um, Chef Bianca, as well as myself, birthday, September twenty-eighth. I know some citizens may not eat Caribbean food, but however, Officer Mendoza did die on our streets. I'm asking everyone to please stop by Armando's Bistro. The address is six-two-three Point South Parkway in Jonesboro, Georgia. For your support, I mean, the food is amazing, the ambiance as you walk in, you will see Officer Mendoza's spirit just all around the place. Pictures. And I know some of you cater to different establishments in Jonesboro, I won't name any. But it's unfortunate that this man, handsome man, in Clayton County, served our streets. Okay, I won't go there, okay. Um, I'm asking everyone, as I stated, the address is six-two-three Point South Parkway, Jonesboro, Georgia. Please come and support. Mendoza's Bistro does not serve alcoholic beverages, which means you can leave there without a DUI. Hello? Um, but anyway, thank you so much for your time. And thank you, um, Commissioner Franklin for being the one to come and establish the patronize. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Joseph Ector.
Good evening. Joseph Ector, District Three, Clayton County. I come on behalf of some of my citizens that, or mine. I'm one of the community leaders in the county. Uh, I had a neighbor whose mother fell, went to a Southern Regional, sat in an emergency room till three AM. Nothing done. But she was billed and charged. I heard what they said earlier. She's now at Piedmont Fair, um, with cancer and some life-threatening sicknesses. But I'm here tonight to ask the board, I heard about the monies we've given or whatever. Let's take it accountability. Let's look at, we look at Piedmont Fair, we look at Midtown Emery. Let's make Southern Regional look like that. We talk about making our county look better, but what are we doing to make it better? If they're not fit to take care of us and people, I know some people may have given you all some good things that are happening, but let's look at the bad things that happen. People are going there to die. And that's not good. My wife told me, if she ever gets sick, I bet not take her to Southern Regional.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do want to add, we prayed this weekend with Ms. Celeste. I want you all to know as a board, Ms. Celeste Dean, who he's referring to, is one of our employees as well. And I've heard that over and over again about people waiting in the emergency room, not being treated, having to go someplace else, and yet receiving a bill, uh, along with Jermaine Duncan, along with, uh, many others. Uh, so this is something that the citizens have brought to me. So, thank you so very much.
Aretha Enslay.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman Turner. Um, I'm just gonna read something real quickly. I'm gonna read something, oh, my name is Aretha Enslay and I live at Clayton County, Incorporated. I'm just gonna read something really quickly. Um, this is from the ACCG. And this is the Georgia Constitution which states all government of right originates with the people, is founded upon their will only, and is instituted solely for the good of the whole. Public officers are trustees and servants of the people and of all, at all times amenable to them. As elected officials, county commissioners are trustees, trustees of the people. They have been entrusted with county property and all legal, legally obligated to manage that property for the benefit of the citizens. Commissioners must never forget that the county property over which they have control is not their own. They are subject to every limit, limitation imposed generally by law upon trustees. County commissioners have a fiduciary responsibility that demands they carry out their duties with the sole intent and purpose of benefiting the citizens of their community in Georgia. As public servants, commissioners are charged with the duty of tending to the business of their citizens and owe an obligation of loyalty to the public as they perform their duties. They are required to exercise their discretion and judgment free from the taints of self-interest, bias, and undisclosed conflicts of interest. Commissioners must always be mindful of their citizens and the state of Georgia. Elected officials are held to a higher standard and they're unelected than their unelected constituents in many regards. There are three broad subject areas that apply to all county commissioners and must be understood in order to avoid potential legal ramifications. Number one, abuse of office. Number two, conflicts of interest. And three, ethical standards. And we find that we having problems with those elected officials at times.
Thank you, ma'am, your time's up. Carol Yancy.
Carol Yancy, Rets, Georgia. ACCG, abuse of office, conflicts of interest, and ethical standards. In part states, an offense constituting an abuse of office could send a commissioner to prison. A conflict of interest may invalidate a decision or transaction in which a commissioner participated and could possibly result in removal from office. I.e., Ms. Franklin voting for herself three hundred and seventy-five dollar an hour attorney fees for a personal lawsuit she has against her without our tax dollars. Ethical standards guide commissioners in doing the right thing in the right way. Abuse of office. ACCG lists twelve criminal offenses conducted beyond one's legal power or authority or trevarie acts. I.e., a commissioner and her constituent aide colluding against a community leader filing a false police report. Number eleven, violation of oath of office in part swearing, affirming that he or she meets the qualification of office, does not hold any funds that are unaccounted for and which may be due to the state or any other political subdivision therefore. I.e., Ms. Franklin's March the fourth, twenty-twenty affidavit and declaration of candidacy. OCGA sixteen dash ten dash one makes it a felony for a commissioner to willfully and intentionally violate his or her oath of office. Complaint submitted to Judge Ferguson and County Election and Registration Board, August the sixth. As of tonight, both unresponsive. Thank you.
Once again, they need to be stricken from the record for inaccurate information, per our county code.
That's, thank you. Uh, Carol, uh, I'm sorry. Ari Swan, Ari Swan.
Hello, good eating, good evening. Those are ends. My name is Annie Swan. I'm a resident of Clayton County. Jonesboro. I'm just here, um, to comment on Southern Regional. I've been a, um, member of the community for thirty years here. And I've seen Southern Regional go through many changes. I'd like to see Southern Regional restored with, um, the money, the funds they have. I know, I've heard that they are owned by a very, um, what would you say? Um, um, financially able company or entity to make the improvements so we could have a hospital in the community that we would like to go to and be proud of. Uh, my mother went there, um, she had a stroke. So, she went there, it was known as the Stroke Center of Care. We were in the emergency room. They put, took my mother to ambulance, the paramedics left, put her in the room. And I watched my mother have stroke after stroke after stroke before a doctor showed up. No nursing room. I'm in the hallway screaming, come help my mother. I also have a daughter who has lupus, who got lupus when she was twenty-six years old. Um, it made her kidneys fail, took out her kidneys. She had to go to Southern Regional for an emergency. Um, she was admitted, um, she was admitted there. Um, while she was there, um, they did not take her to be dialysized timely like she was supposed to be. Um, nursing shortage staff, the staff, um, unprofessional, just rude, mean. All this could be fixed. I've been around a long time. I've seen companies, um, that were down to come up to be, um, brought up to standards. Now, the inside need fixing when you drive by there, it's an eyesore. It sounds like a big eyesore, but we want to fix it from the inside out so that it is a place in the community where we would want to go as, um, Clayton County residents. It would not have to tell, like I told my, um, family, my daughters, do not take me to Southern Regional. If I don't care if I have a stroke, I'm laying down, put me in the car and drive me downtown.
Your, your time is up, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Rose Jackson.
Mr. Chair, this is our last speaker.
Hey, Ms. Jackson.
Hello.
Hey.
Uh, Commissioner Turner, Franklin, and all the Commissioners. My name is Rose Jackson. I live in Fayetteville, Georgia. I'm here tonight to talk about the, uh, Rivers Edge community, which we have felt abandoned. Uh, once upon a time, we were premier community in Clayton County. And it has not been so in a, in a number of years since we lost the, uh, golf course. My complaint is that this county bought it, made some promises about fixing the, the, um, the trail. It has not happened, only in pieces, phase one, phase two, and it's just gone on for years. My main concern there is the community center, the golf course center, that could be utilized. That we have been told many excuses about kids breaking out the windows and, uh, you know, that that's the reason the building is not ready. The re, any building left alone, kids will vandalize. If you have an abandoned house, somebody will go in there and take out the copper wiring. We know that. There are things that can be done to fix that. And that's what I'm asking. Why have you all turned your back on us with the promises that were made that after Lake Spivey got their work done, then we would be next? And it's just, they can be a whole highways in the number of years that it's taken Clayton County to fix a trail and to fix that little property over there so we can use it. If you fix it, I offered to put pav, painting classes in there on my dime for a month. Let's just get something done. Chairman, I'm looking at you.
I'm looking.
I'm looking at you. I mean, seriously. We're twelve hundred homes, a very large tax base, and things are not getting done for us anymore. And I'd like to know why.
Give me a call, we'll talk.
Okay, thank you.
But I do want to say this. Lake Spivey was, was that golf course was put back together with private money, not public money.
She's talking about the trail. I believe she's talking about the trail pathway. Uh, is there a need for, uh, of course there is, come on, Ms. Reed.
Yes, of course. Uh, litigation and personnel.
All right, is that motion going to executive session for litigation and personnel?
So moved. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
I'll suck in the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.